Good morning, everyone, and welcome. At this time, I call Paulding County Board of Commissioners' Work Session to order on this October 13th, 2020, and thank you all for being here. Don't see any elected officials other than an upcoming elected official, the Commissioner of Post One, Keith Dunn is here. Glad to have you here, Keith. And Marshall, if you'd bring the list forward. Be a good time to turn off your phones. I think mine's still on. And we're pleased and privileged to have the Paulding County Sheriff's Office Chaplain, Chief Joey Meeks, who's going to bring us our invocation and lead us in the place. Thank you for being here, Joey.
Let's all stand, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Please join us in prayer. Fathers, we come, we thank you so much for our county, Father, our state. We, Lord, we just thank you for what allows life to be here, Father. I pray that you touch each Commissioner today, Father. I pray as they make decisions, Father, I pray that you'd lead them. I pray that you'd guide them in a special way. We pray today, Father, for all of our first responders. I pray, Father, that you'd build a huge hedge around them. I pray that you'd protect them in a very special way, Father. Praying, God, that you'd just move in people's lives here in the county, Father. Our heart, Father, was so full of joy as we seen people vote yesterday, Father. I pray that you'd keep your hand on all of our elections, Father, and praying, God, that you'd move in that. And pray, Father, that you'd help us, Lord, here in Paulding County, Father, to uplift you and hold you dear. This morning, we come with a special petition of Sister Rosemary Butler. I pray, God, that you'd touch her. I pray that you'd touch her family this morning, Father. And we just want to give you all the honor and all the praise because you're so worthy in Jesus' sweet name. Amen and amen. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Chaplain Meeks. And we have another elected official that's not with us, but he is on audio, and that would be Brian Stover, who is not with us today in presence. The minutes for the September 17th, 2020 Work Session and September 17th, 2020 Board Meeting Minutes are available for review. We're not going to have the announcements that were planned because of technical problems. I don't guess that's been solved yet. So we will do the announcements and including the positively Paulding this afternoon at 2:00. Have no invited guests this morning under bid awards. Item number two is to award the purchase of an asphalt distributor truck in the amount of $191,700 to Tractor and Equipment Company. And Ms. Pollard, assisted by Mr. Jones, will brief us.
Good morning. This was a budgeted purchase. So it's been discussed during that process. It's an asphalt distributor truck to use in DOT. These purchases are more or less territorial. So this is, the quote that we received is from a tractor and equipment company, and they serve the southeast. And so there were no other options for purchase, and the price is $191,700.
Any questions, Tabitha? Any additions, George?
Morning.
Morning.
I'll just say it's kind of, it's viewed, this piece of equipment's kind of viewed as the unglamorous workhorse of the paving operation. Basically, what it does is provides tack material to go between the new asphalt and the old asphalt, bonding it together. If you didn't have this, you wouldn't be paving. It wouldn't work. You wouldn't have any pavement that would last. So it's an essential part of the operation. Over the last two summers during the prime paving season, we've had multiple breakdowns with our existing piece of equipment. So this will help us get back to our normal production levels.
And did you cite the age of that equipment?
I'm sorry. Yes, correctly. It's, the old one was a 2007. So some of our equipment is older than that, but if you look at this compared to probably other public works departments, we, you know, we get a pretty good amount of use out of it. And if, you know, Tim up in Fleet says it's time to replace it, it's generally time to replace it.
But that's a hard thing to clean.
I wouldn't want to be wearing your clothes and doing it, honestly.
All right. Thank you. The next bid award number three is to award the Costco Drive Widening Project, PR-IMP 034-1 to low bidder CNS paving in the amount of $155,914.80. Also, Ms. Pollard, Mr. Jones.
So George and I are going to be up and down for a minute or two. This also was a project that's been discussed over the past few months. We did receive six bids, and we are recommending award to the low bid. Those bids did range from $155,914.80 up to $282,751.73, and DOT is comfortable with the low bid.
This proposal is for the construction of the third lane going between Old Griffin Road and the Costco store located in Post One. Basically, the contract work is for asphalt curbing and gutter, line striping, et cetera, everything to complete a road. We are, in August of this year, we approved a grading-only contract that work, and this work will go in conjunction. The funding for this work will be come from the Costco Infrastructure Improvement Projects that were approved at the October 22nd, 2019 Board Meeting. And the engineer's estimate of the total work, the grading-only contract in this proposal, is within 5.7% of our engineer's estimate. So we feel comfortable going forward, and we recommend this bid for approval.
Looks like the next closest bid is $25,000 less, so we'll take that home.
Yeah, definitely. It's, like I said, $25,000 more of the other bids. The timetable, this obviously needs to be done before the Costco store is opened up in mid-March, so there is a timeline that this needs to be completed by. So that adds a little bit of price into the work. But like I said, we feel comfortable with being that close to our engineer's estimate.
Comments, questions? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Number four, switch over to fire. Award the purchase of eight administrative and response vehicles for the fire department to Hardy Family Ford in the amount of $250,156. Tabitha and Chief Pelfrey.
As we do with most of our vehicle purchases, we purchase off the statewide contract. So the statewide contract is a bid that the state of Georgia issues, and then they allow us to piggyback. So they award that to one vendor. That vendor will then sell those vehicles at that statewide contract to all of us. So what Fleet generally does is they'll take that statewide contract and allow Hardy Chevrolet to participate in this bid process. In this particular instance, we are recommending award, obviously, to Hardy Chevrolet, and they have come in less, below the state contract by $5,129 with all vehicles included.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It is eight vehicles. Four of those vehicles are for new positions and also ALS response units that we're talking about getting together. Two of them are the F-250 trucks for the rapid response units. And also, we have the investigator and the EMS chief have to have vehicles to get around in. The other four, replacement vehicles for administration and as well as inspection department. And this will give us some, the current vehicles will go into spare units. We don't have but one spare unit, so. Any questions?
He just answered my question.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Joey. Reports from committees and departments. We're excited about the election, and Ms. Dieter Holden, the election supervisor, is here to give us an update. And Dieter, thank you for coming.
Thank you for letting me be here. I normally don't go off notes. I just kind of shoot from the hip because I'm a shoot-from-the-hip kind of girl, but I don't want to leave out any information. So if I have to read some things, y'all just please forgive me because I just, I don't like to read information. But I do want to thank y'all for the opportunity to be here. We had a very exciting day yesterday, so I feel like that I need to bring it to speed on some numbers. So you'll have them because I know that you all are in the public and you get questions. So I want to make sure that you're always prepared to give those numbers. First of all, as of this morning, Paulding County is currently serving 123,463 voters. That has tripled since I took this job 16 years ago. So people are coming here. As you can see the pictures, we had an awesome day yesterday, and that just thrills me to see that many people in line and wanting to cast their vote. So for the November 3rd election, we have issued from our office 23,636 paper absentee ballots. Of those ballots issued, we have received back 6,847. So needless to say, we're going to be opening a lot of absentee ballots. As we get the mail, the mail did not come yesterday because of the holiday, but today, after we process the mail, we will probably have over 8,000 voted ballots in our possession. So the voters are voting, obviously, and they are voting by mail and, of course, in person. I want to thank Jeff Harkins for doing these shots for us. You know, to see it in person is amazing, to see that many people. I got here right at 6:00 yesterday morning, and there were people already in line. So there's a huge desire for people to cast their votes. Yesterday was our historical first day of early voting. Sometimes we see between 500 to 800 on the first day of early voting. Yesterday, I'm pleased to announce that we voted 1,962 voters face-to-face, which is amazing. We had massive lines all day. You can see that they go down in front of the Sheriff's Department. At one time, we did have them all the way backed up to the DMV. However, when it got about 4:00, I was kind of projecting when we would vote the last voter, which I was looking at about 7:00 PM. We voted the last voter at 5:30 PM, and I'm so very proud of our poll workers and our staff. But I want to thank the voters for their willingness to come out. It rained yesterday. It was hot. It was muggy, but they came out. They had patience with us. They had positive attitudes, and they showed us a lot of respect and a lot of support, and we appreciate that. I want to commend the staff and the poll workers. It was a long day. They did a great job. I was out there all day. And the witness that I have of those poll workers and that staff, they provided the customer service level that I think should be expected in this county, and they served our voters, and they served them well. So I want to make sure that they know how much I appreciate them, and just to say that I'm proud of them is an understatement. I want to thank Trevor Hess, our chief marshal. I called on him several times yesterday. He's always there for us. He's got our back, so does his deputies, and we appreciate that more than he will ever know. So thank you, Trevor, so much. I also want to thank Sergeant Ashley Henson. He was an asset to us yesterday. When the lines started going in front of the Sheriff's Department, he was amazing. He was like, "You're welcome to do whatever you need to do. We just want to keep our people safe." And we came up with a plan, and we did that. So I just appreciate the way all of our departments works as teams when they see one of us in need. So they just extended to us, and I appreciate it. Frank, I know I made your day miserable yesterday, and I'm so sorry, but thank you for being there. I looked at one time, and Frank was just standing outside the glass looking at me, and I thought, "Am I about to be fired? I mean, what's going on?" And he said, "I'm just checking on you, just checking on you." And that means more to me than you'll ever know. I appreciate that so much. So what I'm here for is to share some even more exciting news. And I just want to, this is where I'm going to have to start kind of reading because I don't want to get anything wrong. But the Center for Tech and Civic Life and the Center for Election Innovation and Research announced on September 1st that they were committing $300 million to promote safe and reliable voting in all states and localities during this COVID-19 pandemic. Mark Zuckerberg, y'all know who he is, the founder of Facebook, and his wife, Priscilla Chan, they committed $250 million to the Center for Tech and Civic Life and $50 million to the Center for Election Innovation and Research. So the way our story begins is we knew about the grant. The state was pushing it, saying, "Hey, there's money out there. There's money out there. You all should apply for it." Well, I'm kind of skeptical about grants because sometimes grants end up costing you a lot of time and money. And I never win anything, so I'm thinking, "They don't give me any money." But anyways, we were approaching the deadline, which was October 1st, and I had someone reach out to me. They said, "You really need to apply for this money." So I went online on September 29th, and I thought, "Well, I'll give it a shot." And I was reading the front print, and it said that the least you can get is $5,000. And I thought, "Well, hey, $5,000 bucks, $5,000 bucks, right, Tabitha?" So I applied. It took me about 15 minutes, and I was like, "Well, here goes nothing." So I had to go pick up a database the next day, and I was going through my emails as I was waiting, and I got a response. And when I saw the amount of money that we are getting, I cried. I almost passed out, but I was so excited. So on September 30th, the next day after I applied for the grant, I get an email saying that Paulding County would be the recipients of $323,318. I was blown away. The first person I called, and I'm sorry, I had to, I called Tabitha. I said, "You are not going to believe this. Are you sitting down?" She says, "Oh, God, is it bad?" And I said, "No." So I was so very excited, and I was like, "I can't believe this." So we are going to use this money. The money is set aside for poll worker recruitment and training, polling place rental, temporary staffing, equipment to process absentee ballots, real estate to expand. I really should ask for like $5 million, and we'd be sad that I didn't want to be selfish. I didn't really ask for anything. They just gave it to us based on what our budget was. PPE, voter education, that's just a few ways that they, you know, wanted us to use the money. So far, we've used money to purchase four absentee ballot opening machines, so no more letter openers to open thousands upon thousands of ballots. We did use the money for this, which I'm very proud of. Some of you've probably gotten this. It paid to publish and mail the voter education guide that went to every household with registered voters in it to prepare them for the November election. We are so proud of this, and we've gotten so many phone calls and emails and positivity for this, and I'm just very excited about it. We also have used some of the money to purchase the large white tents, as you see there. Obviously, I didn't purchase enough because we had voters extending past the tents, but it did keep them out of the elements and in the cool and in the shade. So I probably could have used about 50 more as of the numbers yesterday, but that's okay. And we will also use some of this money to install a camera for a new absentee ballot drop box that we were given by the state in another location in the county on government property. So we'll be working on that this week. We are just so, so happy that we have received this money. We're honored to be a recipient, but I want to tell you the best part of this. This money is 100% free. There is no match. It is not a federal grant. It is not a state grant. It is 100% free from a nonprofit, nonpartisan organization. And I cannot begin to tell you how honored and how excited and how thankful we are that they gave us this money. And we want to use this money to give the voters of this county the service that they deserve, and it's going to help offset our budget that you all approved that we're very thankful for. But I think this will create a good tax savings for our county and our taxpayers. So just so excited. I wanted to share this news and let everybody know that we will use this money to do whatever we can to make the voting experience better for the voters of this county. So thank you so much for allowing me to do this and to share this with you, and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer those.
Anybody have any hurrahs or comments? It's just awesome.
Excited.
That's an amazing tool for folks, you know? The fact that, you know, you guys are reaching out and educating like that, that is, and we're able to do so because of the efforts that you put forth without really, you know, pulling from the tax base. Awesome. Thanks.
Thank you so much. And I did leave some of the voter education guides on the back table if y'all want to share them with anyone. And I'm going to get some to Laurie to take to the water department to share with people that come in, so.
Very, very helpful. You know, some of the things you may not understand that you vote on, it's in there. It's good information all the way around, and please, always go for your grants in the future. You may be on a roll.
I hope so. Thank y'all so much, and I apologize, but I am needed downstairs, so I'm going to have to leave. So if y'all think of anything later, please just contact me and reach out. Thank you all so much for everything you do.
Thank you, Dieter and Peggy.
Thank you, Dieter.
Thank you, Dieter.
We have no one who's signed up for public participation on agenda items under the consent agenda consideration of the, I don't have to read these, do I, Rebecca? Or do I read them one time? We hadn't met, you know, for almost a month. Okay. Consent agenda number five is to approve the updated Paulding County road naming and honorary designation policy. And number six is to authorize the chairman to sign a quick claim deed to abandon .291 acres of permanent easement to Four Star Real Estate Group Incorporated for development of Wildbrook. Would any of the commissioners like to move that to regular session for further discussion or evaluation? Okay. Move on to old business, which we have no old business this morning. Under new business, item number seven is to have a public hearing for the abandonment of a portion of Smith Road. And Mr. Jones will lead. At this time, I'd like to officially open the public hearing with his opening remarks. We'll begin, and then if any of the public would like to come forward and make a statement or comments, that would be great.
Again, Chairman, this hearing is for the abandonment of the northernmost portion of Smith Road located in Post One. Smith Road itself is .609 miles and extends from Macklin Road north to Handy Road. In this particular area, Smith Road has a 30-foot prescriptive right-of-way and a 16-foot travel surface of surface treatment pavement. This abandonment hearing is a direct result of a settlement agreement that was between Paulding County Board of Commissioners and Anthony Cooper. That requires the county to hold a public meeting to abandon the portion of Smith Road that's fronting Mr. Cooper's property. The abandonment area is 1.04 acres, and the linear mileage is approximately .28 miles. The abandonment area will start approximately 360 feet south of Powder Mill Creek and extend north to Handy Road. By Georgia law, a county road can be abandoned under two criteria. Number one, has ceased to be used by the public to the extent that no substantial public purpose is served by it. And two, that its removal from the county road system is in the best public interest. This section of Smith Road at Powder Mill Creek has been closed since, I believe, May of 2009, has not been open north of that point since. We had some historical ADT traffic numbers on Smith Road. In 2004, we had an ADT count of 140 vehicles per day in this area, and in 2005, 120 vehicles. Mr. Cooper is the only property owner on both sides of the creek, north of, or on both sides of the road in this abandonment area. That's pretty much it in terms of background information for this agenda item.
Well, thanks for the backup material. When I was post one, sitting in Ron's seat, we, Scott and I, had some conversations in Mr. Cooper's kitchen and a lot of education there. One question that I don't think I got answered from the backup material is if it's abandoned, is it permanent, or can it be changed, reversed, or does the county have any option? It used to be used as a school bus road to get kids to Hiram High School and if there was ever a need.
Once it's abandoned, it's abandoned. So it would go to the property owner if we decided, or if there was a desire to open up or require that section of road. I believe we would have to go through the process of negotiating with the property owner and acquiring property. I mean, I'll let the county attorney speak to that, but I believe that is the process.
That is correct. Once it is abandoned and returns to whichever landowners are entitled to receive it, yeah, if we want to open a new road or reopen what previously existed, if we no longer have actual ownership, we will have to acquire it through the regular procedures. And commissioners, just to be clear, I want to elaborate on one thing that Mr. Jones said, and that is the standard for abandonment, just so everyone is clear. State law says when it is determined that a section of the county road system has for any reason ceased to be used by the public to the extent that no substantial public purpose is served by it, or that its removal from the county road system is otherwise in the best public interest, then the county may abandon.
Thank you, George. Stand by. I'd like to ask any citizens that'd like to come forward and make a comment about this abandonment? Yes, sir. Come forward and is there, there's a place that you could sign in?
It's, sir. My name's Noel Dillard, and I'm one of the, I'm the largest landowner on that road other than Andy. And first off, y'all didn't properly notify all the citizens on that road that is having this meeting today, so I think y'all postpone it to another date. Second, excuse me. Second, if there's 120 cars going down there today, seem like that's pretty busy. And that's been 10, 15 years ago, according to what he said. And I don't, it don't matter to me whether you open or close it. I'm not directly on a property, but the road scenario going down through there, cars parked in the road and everything, you can hardly get a car truck by down through there. I want the road widened to what it's supposed to be, two lanes with whatever it's supposed to be, for at least 1,000 feet from Macklin down through there. And I don't, like I said, I don't care if you close it or open it, but if you do close it and you ban it for permanent, don't come back later when Andy dies or something happens and say, "We want to put a subdivision in here. We got to open this road back up." Because that's what you're going to wind up faced with here for too long, because me and Andy both getting old, you know? But that's going to be what you're faced with sooner or later. And you're going to be having to come back and say, "Well, we got this wind song," or somebody wants to put a subdivision in here. We want to open it back up." So you're going, you're just defeating the purpose. And that's how I feel about it. And on this, it's kind of, on this kind of shady deal with Andy and the sewer system and all that, with y'all agreeing to close a road on the lawsuit with him. How about getting Mr. Davis to explain that since he's our commissioner and what he can't tell you about you filling it in for us? Is that fired up?
I would like to clarify. The agreement with Mr. Cooper was to hold the hearing to consider the abandonment. The agreement with Mr. Cooper was not to abandon the road. Is that correct, Mr. Phillips?
Yes. By state law, a county cannot abandon a road until after notice is sent. The notice in this case is required to be sent to, I believe it, notice to property owners located thereon. So a notice would be required to be sent to those property owners who own land adjoining the section of road that is proposed for abandonment. No road may be aban- No road may be abandoned by the county until after a public hearing is held, which is what this one is. And it's only until after receiving the input from that public hearing that the board would make a decision to see whether one or both of the statutory criteria are satisfied.
Now, this don't apply to anybody that lives down that road that's got property on it other than if you touch the road. About all the people that live off the road, I live a driveway about a quarter mile, half a mile down that road. My son lives there, he wasn't notified about the meeting. And it affects me more probably because there's more cars in my family than probably the rest of the road.
Mr. Dillard, I recognize what you're saying. I'm just reading what the state law requires. Again, it is specifically notice to property owners located thereon. Thereon being the portion of the road that's proposed for abandonment.
Okay, now, since you addressed that, how about fixing the road, like I said, two-car length wide, just 1,000 feet or so? You can't get down there, I'm fixing to remodel the house or build me a new one or something. Can't get no trucks down through there because they've got the road scenario. When I come out my driveway, you're driving in somebody else's yard. And if you had the proper road there, I wouldn't be faced with that.
George, would you address this again, please?
in this abandonment hearing closure, the issue is we don't have adequate right-of-way. Typically, older roads, I guess we have either prescriptive right-of-way 30-foot or it might be a dedicated 30, but I believe there's a very small portion that has a 60-foot dedicated right-of-way. The rest of the right-of-way that goes along that road, we have like 30 feet. So, that is the issue. If the property owners, if we could work with them to obtain additional right-of-way, we would be able to put in a standard roadway shoulder drainage. But that's been the holdup.
Mr. Chair, if I may add to Mr. Jones's comments, just for clarification, one of the things that George and I are guilty of is throwing around right-of-way terminology as if everyone has a full understanding of what those things are. Prescriptive right-of-way is right-of-way essentially for layman's terms, it's ditch-to-ditch right-of-way, where you've got a roadway that has been in operation for 20-plus years and we have countless roads within the county that have just always been public roads. The portion of the road that the county owns is acquired over a consecutive period of 20 years' use and it is typically from ditch-to-ditch, which is about 30 feet. George also used the term express right-of-way. We sometimes increase the width of that right-of-way when a landowner by deed, by right-of-way deed in particular, conveys to the county property in addition to what's been acquired by prescription. So, you may get roads that are 40 feet wide, 60 feet wide, 120 feet wide, they probably even go higher than that. But that's the difference between a prescriptive right-of-way, which is typically ditch-to-ditch, and express right-of-way.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. And I would like to ask if anyone else would like to speak? Yes, sir. Just sign in there, Roger, and thank you for coming up.
Good morning. My name is Roger Smith. I live at 105 Smith Road. My parents bought that farm, 52 acres, in 1952. So, for me and my family, most of the area there on Smith Road is family. There's a couple that's not family, but they're like family. I would like to see Smith Road abandoned from Macklin Road to Powder Springs Creek. The only people that really use that road is the people that live there, the mail carriers, FedEx and so forth, and then the county down to the pump station. There's no other use for, really, for anybody to be on that road. So, it all being family there, I would like to see, and all of my family, they would like to see that part of Smith Road abandoned also. I think that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And, Mr. Jones, I know that throws a whole different consideration. If you want to comment about how that is a different consideration, would be educational for us?
Yeah, yes, sir. This is not part of this particular item. Typically, when you have an existing road that's serving, I believe there's eight driveways on that section of Smith Road that are being served. If you're going from a public road to a private road, obviously, the Board of Commissioners would have to approve that change. Also, there would have to be an agreement done between the property owners, like who would maintain the road, how it would be maintained. So, there's additional complexity that's offered. Additionally, like the gentleman had mentioned, Mr. Smith, that there's a county pump station down there, so we'd need some type of easement to access that. And also, the different utility companies would need easements to access their facilities along there.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. Would anyone else like to speak? Hearing ended. This time, I will close the public hearing and move on to new business number eight. Discuss action for the Board of Commissioners to approve the request to assist with funding in the amount of $20,000 for the Hangar One project at the airport. And Mr. Baker, our county administrator, is going to report. And we have the CEO of the airport, Director Terry Tibbetts, who's in the audience with Yolanda. Thank y'all for being here.
Mr. Chairman, if I could make a request of Commissioner Stover. Commissioner Stover, could you mute your phone? Thank you. Mr. Chairman, thank you. I received, my office received a request from the airport from the Director, Terry Tibbetts, recently asking for some assistance on a project that he was working on. And the project is to finish out, build out a portion of the office of Hangar One. And this project would add approximately 5,000 square feet of rentable office space, two new restrooms, and a 24/7 pilot's lounge. The request was for approximately 20% of the overall project, so the request was for $20,000. I do want to point out to the board that this request for assistance is, in addition to the current IGA, doesn't have anything to do with the IGA itself, because the IGA is basically for operational issues and this is a separate project. So, I know, Terry, thanks for being here. Mr. Chairman, if the board has any questions of me or Terry, we'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions, ladies and gentlemen?
What brought this to be, coming back to being a shared expense between us and the airport? I know we've got the IGA for operational stuff. Why are we being asked to share the expense and where did we come up with 20%?
That's a good question. I might need to have Terry assist me with that. The main issue with this is this is an addition that will help bring economic development to the airport. And with that, you've got some rentable, as I mentioned, rentable space. And also, too, with the pilot's lounge, it's been something that I know Terry's been needing to have, because we need for those pilots to have comfort when they come in, they help with their flight plans. And if I'm saying anything incorrectly, please come up and correct me. But I know that's something that you've been needing for, you know, we want to have our pilots come in to the facility and feel good and be able to rest there for a minute, whatever they need to do, follow their flight plans and that issue. But this is additional space that is rentable.
So, I don't necessarily disagree about the pilot's lounge or even that this is necessarily needed. That wasn't the basis of my question. The basis of my question was what brought on the sharing of the expense and how did we get to 20%?
Might I address that?
Absolutely.
So, the way we came up with that, Ron, is in accordance with the intergovernmental agreement that we signed last year, all of the land and all of the facilities are now jointly held by the county and the airport authority. So, it's no longer airport authority property, it's now airport authority property and Board of Commissioners property. And the way we arrived at the 20% was based on need. The Economic Development Office has agreed to fund about 80% of this, which they have done, and so that left us about 20% short to complete the project. And it is an economic development benefit to the county because we have three businesses that are in fact now already operating in this space. This is the building that was never completed about six years ago when Hangar One was built out. You may remember, this is the space that had the gravel floor. And so, it now houses about 1,500 square feet for the Museum of Flight, which is paying rent in that space, and two other businesses that are also paying rent. So, it will be a revenue generating project for the airport, which will help us in the long term. But we're about $20,000 short in having the funds to complete the entire project. So, again, it was based on need.
If I could also interject something, there was a situation also that occurred in that particular space that needed some assistance, because there was something that was going on there that required some assistance with putting the slab in, which was causing some other issues. Can you kind of address that a little bit? So, it's not just that, but it's also a situation where we had an asset that was not in good shape and that needed to be corrected. So, that's another issue.
Right. This was actually originated as a recommendation from Jimmy Renfro, who came out there while we were building out the wall in the bigger portion of the hangar. And we had a lot of rust that was developing on the structural steel in the office building. And so, we needed to control the humidity in this unbuilt area. As you can imagine, when you abandon a steel structure, a steel building, rust immediately begins to set in and nature begins to reclaim the resources that were used to build it. So, we had to do something in order to stabilize the building, in order to protect the asset. Now, did we have to go all the way to building it out and using it? Certainly not. We could have installed dehumidifiers and some additional drainage and perhaps some other mitigation procedures, but that would not have generated any income for the airport or for the county. So, we decided the most prudent thing to do was to go ahead and just finish out the ground floor of this building and put it to use. And that's what we've done. And so, we now have the occupancy permit, the project is finished. We're just asking for you to participate in that and help us with our budget here at the airport so that we can continue to move the airport forward.
So, I get where you're coming from on this and I think it's a good thing to build that out and let it be used. And I'm not saying it's not. When we signed the IGA, the titling of the land to both parties was presented as a way of unifying and let's move forward together, which I think is a good thing, because we need some unification around that whole situation. And I think everybody would agree to that. It feels like, and I'm not saying this is the case, but I'm saying it is, the phone calls I'm going to get this afternoon. It feels like the joint ownership is now being used as an excuse for the county to continue contributing outside of planned budget within the IGA.
So, the budget that was agreed to in the intergovernmental agreement only addressed operational needs. It did not address any of the future plans for the airport. So, yes, this is 100% outside of the intergovernmental agreement by design. And so, that's why I'm standing before you making the request today. If it had been approved in the intergovernmental agreement, it would have already have been approved and we would have just done it, spent the money, y'all would have paid for it, and we would have gone forward. But because we are now partnered together, we are asking for participation in our capital improvement programs. And y'all have been very gracious in agreeing to move the airport forward on other occasions, and this is one such occasion.
Okay, thank you, Terry. Jason, could you just confirm that it is, there are no legal issues with county participating in capital projects in this matter?
Yes, it is my understanding that at the present time for this, there would not be a legal issue with the county participating. As to, just want to add one component to the joint ownership, we're in the process of making sure the deeds actually accurately reflect joint ownership out there. But no, I do not see a legal issue that would prohibit the county from doing this.
Thank you, sir. May I ask that you describe the tenants that are there and what economic benefit they can have for our educational, our kids in our region here?
Right. So, we've got about 5,000 square feet that have been completed. The Museum of Flight is in the process of moving in. As I said, they're a rent-paying tenant there at the airport, but they're providing about two acres of outside, what we call lovingly the petting zoo. These are the outside displays that have already been moved to the airport property and that's open and viewable today. And they are in the process of moving their inside display items into this space, which will allow now an indoor component to the museum. And so, that gives us a new tourist attraction at the airport and for the county on the western side of the county there. So, that's one business that's occupying part of this space. There is a designated examiner. The FAA requires every pilot to have a checkride when they complete their training, to obtain their certification for initial certification as pilot and for further certifications for the various ratings that a pilot may seek over their career. And we now have such a designated examiner physically located at the airport, Mr. Brant Robinson. And so, that allows us to provide a new service that we've never been able to provide at the airport before. And he is paying rent on the office that he is occupying. And the third business is the flight school, Flying Tigers. Used to be located in the terminal building and they have now relocated to this space and doubled their footprint and doubled the rent that they're paying to the airport. So, they are growing and prospering and bringing flight training to those Paulding County citizens who would desire to move in this direction. So, we've got three businesses, a designated examiner, the flight school, and the museum. And in addition, of course, we've got the 24/7 pilot's lounge. All pilots are required to train at night for a certain number of hours. And once they get their certifications, in order to maintain that certification, they have to log so many hours at night within the previous 30 days. So, this opens us up to that kind of training so that we can sell fuel at night, we can have facilities available for those operators that are there at night. So, it's an important step for us.
Are you going to allow law enforcement?
We have, in fact, allowed law enforcement. We have sent an email note to the sheriff's office. There is no public restroom open from this building to the county line. And so, we have notified them and given them the gate codes so that they can gain access to this pilot's lounge. And they have been, both our local sheriff's office and the Georgia State Patrol are now utilizing this facility as what I believe to be the only restroom that they have access to once they leave this building all the way to the county line going west on 278. So, that has brought a lot of additional patrols to the airport, which is very helpful for our security posture out there, and it is beneficial to law enforcement in that area as well. area as well.
Comments, questions? Stover, you got any comments?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Tibbs, Mr. Baker, very much. Moving on to number nine, discuss action for the Board of Commissioners to approve assistance with funding for emergency repairs to the instrument landing system in the amount of Mr. Baker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item, again, is an item for the airport. It is an emergency situation, the instrument landing system is critical, and Terry, I'd like for you to kind of explain that because I don't want to get lost in that definition, but it's $15,913, but this is an integral part of the operation out there, especially in bad weather, and Terry can explain that. But again, this is an emergency request, and it is not part of the IGA.
So we have two types of navigation that are used in general aviation airports. One is called RNAV, that's your GPS system. You are all familiar with that on our iPhones. We all have GPS that allows us to navigate from point A to point B. But some airports also have ground-based navigation equipment, which is available for those aircraft that do not have certified GPS or for occasions where the GPS, for whatever reason, might be unavailable. And it also allows lower minimums typically. So this system, the instrument landing system, allows a pilot to fly into the Paulding County Airport when the cloud deck is at 200 feet or above. So if you've got a cloud layer 200 feet above the deck of the airport, an aircraft can still safely undo, routinely still safely land at our airport. This was about a million-dollar system at the time it was put in. We're required by the FAA to maintain a certified technician to care for the equipment, and the FAA comes by routinely and inspects the equipment. And in our last inspection, they determined that our phased array antenna, which is part of the localizer, if you want the real details, was out of spec, and what that says is the airplanes are going to be steered off course slightly, and that error is increasing over time. And the FAA decertified our instrument landing system. So today it is not available for our air traffic that's coming in. And so when that's the case, what did the aircraft do? They would typically fly to another airport. So they would go to McCullum, PDK, other airports around that also have these types of systems. So in order to maintain safety of operation at the airport and our competitive advantage over the other airports, we're asking that we get this system back in operation. And again, it's a $15,000 repair to a million-dollar instrument landing system.
The original cost was like $17,000. What happened? It went down.
Just refinement in the budget estimate. They've now ordered the parts and they know the actual cost of the parts.
Other questions? Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Number 10 is discuss action to approve change order number eight for the construction manager at Risk Services for the Richland Creek Reservoir Water Treatment Plant, the Etowah River Pump Station and the Reservoir Pump Station, to extend PC Construction final completion date to December 31, 2020 with no increase in cost. And Ms. Ashmore is already there, ready to go.
We'll be very brief this morning. Earlier this year, you approved a change order with PC Construction for commissioning services to support us during that commissioning phase. That was originally anticipated to be at the end of September. Due to some delays in approvals and permitting, we are requesting, that took longer than we had estimated, and we are at this point requesting that you extend that commissioning timeframe through the end of the year, and PC will do that at no increase in cost.
Thank you, Ms. Ashmore, very well. Item number 11 is discuss action to adopt resolution 20-34, authorizing the transfer of $105,000 to an interest-bearing account to be used by the county for future aeronautical projects approved by the Federal Aviation Administration at the Paulding Northwest Atlanta Airport, and our county attorney, Mr. Jason Phillips, has become an expert on this.
Commissioners, if you'll recall, back several months ago, the board and the airport authority approved 13 conditions for the release of 2-point-something acres for the A&amp;P school that is proposed at the airport. One of those conditions is that $105,000 be, which represents the FAA's opinion of fair market value of this property, be set aside and placed in an interest-bearing account, and that that $105,000 be used for expenditures at the airport that are approved by the FAA. So this resolution directs $105,000 of county funds to be set aside in such an account for future FAA-approved projects at our airport. Be happy to answer any questions.
How will that money be used, Jason? We say FAA-approved projects. Do we have a project that we want to use the money for? We ask the FAA and they give the green light? Or is this something that the FAA will direct us to spend and will come out of that account?
I believe it's the first. I think we propose, FAA approves, and then we can spend it.
Okay.
We're going to earmark, I'm on the airport authority also, as you know, the connectivity to the Dallas sewer system to extend to a manhole that will allow the maintenance school to then connect from there end. So that will be earmarked specifically for that use. So it's an improvement in infrastructure that we were going to do anyway. You want to add anything to that?
Well, I just want to clarify that it's primarily to support the school. So this land was paid for by the FAA, and we have received permission to release the land, but they want to be reimbursed for the value of the land, and their reimbursement is back to the airport, not back to the federal government. So in that sense, it's a win for the community and a win for the school.
All right. Number 12 is discuss action to adopt resolution 20-35, reappointing Johnny McBurroughs to the Paulding County Board of Assessors for the term ending December 31, 2023. And both Mr. Stokes and county attorney, Mr. Phillips, can describe this process, a little bit different with the Tax Assessors Board.
I'll just briefly address the process. Typically, what we see on board appointments is the end of the year slating on a consent agenda for approval without any formal resolution, an individual resolution. The Georgia Department of Revenue, a few years ago, began to state it was their preference that we present and approve, that y'all present and approve individual resolutions for these board members. So that is all this is.
Thank you, sir. Anything to add? Mr. Stokes?
Yes.
Okay. Johnny McBurroughs, one of my heroes, he actually preached a sermon at First Baptist Church on Sunday about faith in blue, which is faith in our law enforcement, some in the room today, that we so much depend on. Dr. McBurroughs has been involved in a lot of things in the county, and I asked Commissioner Hart if he would just read a few things that are a real short biography.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. Dr. Johnny McBurroughs was appointed to the Board of Tax Assessors in 2006. He has lived in Paulding County for over 30 years and is retired from MARTA. For the past 40 years, Dr. McBurroughs has served as a pastor of Shallow Missionary Baptist Church in Dallas. He also serves as a dean/instructor at the Carol Douglas Bible School, superintendent/instructor of the South Georgia Academy of Protestant Ministers, as well as serving on numerous local and state boards. And I would add to that, if you guys have never heard the Dr. Johnny McBurroughs, you can catch him on Facebook, and I'm going to tell you, he is a great speaker.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments for the county attorney? All right, moving on to number 13. Discuss action to adopt resolution 20-36, appointing Lydia Rollins to the Paulding County Board of Tax Assessors for a term ending December 31, 2023. Just want to stick with the same comments there, Jason?
Yes, it's just another member, same procedures.
Okay, and this is a total surprise to Commissioner Kaker and...
Yes, it is.
Ms. Rollins...
You're just full of surprises.
Ms. Rollins is a new appointee by the chairman, and she'll be the only woman on the board also if she is voted on positively this afternoon. You know, you can read all or part of that if you want to. Half of it is on her two sons. She loves her sons.
Ms. Rollins has a chemical engineering degree, and her true calling is in sales, building materials with Georgia Pacific Corporation. They have been in Paulding County for almost 20 years. They've lived in Greenville, Spartanburg, Pittsburgh, San Francisco, before transferring here to Georgia. Her and Lee, her husband, have been married for 31 great years. They have two boys, Daniel and Joseph. She homeschooled them until they both graduated near the top of their class. They're both attending Georgia Tech on scholarship, and I think that one is in the Air Force in this cyberspace security program.
Thank you, sir. If approved, if appointed, should be a great addition to Mr. Stokes' board. And one of the other reasons we do that board earlier than December, like the other ones are coming up pretty soon, is that there's training involved just to get started. They are the only board that meets weekly, so they do a great service for Paulding County. Thank you, Sandy. Item number 14, discuss action to award the purchase of two LifePack 15 V4 cardiac monitors and associated equipment to Stryker Medical in the amount of $90,000. Mr. Pelford?
As you know, the Paulding County Fire Department, we're moving towards the advanced life support, and we've been talking about that quite frequently, ALS. The cardiac monitor defibrillator is a vital piece of equipment that goes on that unit you're required to carry through state certification. So that's one of the things we have to have, probably the most expensive pieces of equipment that you have on there. Included in these quotes, you will see maintenance agreements as well are in there. The technology's come a long way, and these cardiac monitors have Bluetooth capabilities to where we can actually, we arrive on the scene most of the time first, we're actually able with Bluetooth capability to, all the other emergency teams will be able to review this, including the hospitals. What does this do? This eliminates time between EMS response times to the catheterization lab if we have a cardiac event or respiratory event. So this is a very important piece of equipment, and it's life-changing, and I feel like we've got great things going on. We've got some great employees that are trained and eager and waiting. We have paramedics and EMTs that are waiting to get on these response units. We're going to start out with the two. So this is, as I said, it's very vital to have this piece of equipment, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Good job, Chief. Appreciate it. Number 15 is discuss action to award the purchase of a SWAT 6,300 square feet canopy to shady vent construction in the amount of $61,875. Ms. Tabitha Pollard. Oh, it looks like, it's not Ms. Tabitha Pollard, tricked.
Shall I go ahead? Okay. I'd like to answer your questions on this, so I'll go ahead and present it. And also, speaking for Colonel Hunter, who I don't believe made it here today. So working together with finance and the sheriff's office, we bring you this item. As you may or may not remember, we had a large vehicle canopy in the northeast parking lot behind the new sheriff's office, planned for that contract. The pricing we had received during construction was not acceptable, and since this was an item that didn't actually have to be built in order to open the doors, we decided to pull it out of the overall GMP contract. We avoid the markups and the overhead for having a contractor manage it for us. This is a fairly simple item. So, and it's a large canopy. It's 35 feet by 180 feet long. This is for the larger vehicles that the sheriff's office uses, like the K-9 and SWAT vehicles and some other apparatus they have that need to be undercover. So it is still very needed, and we wanted to proceed. In fact, we did put it in the recent budget that was approved under capital. Through some redesign and negotiations, shady vent construction provided a price, as you see, and this was in an overall savings of about 40%. So I think we have a very good deal here now, savings for the citizens, and to get this item actually installed here in the near future. Appreciate your approval and consideration of this item. The sheriff's office also recommends approval of this item, and they've been very involved in selecting this vendor and reaching this price that you see here today. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Scott, did I miss where it's going to be located?
It's directly behind the sheriff's office law enforcement side, which is just north of, if you know, the front doors here, it's on the backside of that facility, and it's tucked away in the northeast corner of the property in the area that's already paved. So it's just a matter of digging, digging in columns and installing this overhead canopy system.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Okay.
All right. Thank you.
That's the conclusion of our regular business, not too much over an hour, and we do have a requirement to go into executive session. Before I get to that, I'd like to ask any of the commissioners if they have any announcements or comments, wisdom to share? Start with Brian. Mr. Stover, Commissioner Stover, do you have anything you'd like to say to the group here?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah.
The, I just want to congratulate nine individuals who chose our county to dedicate their public service to in the form of life safety and other things that they perform in the course of their duties. We added nine firemen, rookie firemen, to the fire department this week, and just wanted to congratulate those guys.
I'd just like to recognize Richard Grant for being here and all the information he puts out for the new era and how he contributes to the county. We appreciate it. Sandy?
I would like to thank Deidra for everything that she is going through right now. We do have a lot of voters out there. If you haven't voted, get out and vote.
And I'll just say, it's worth mentioning that purchase of the vehicles for the fire department, just pointing it out, and also voicing a bit of appreciation to the Hardy dealerships. You know, we can buy those things pretty cheap on state contract, and then we go to the Hardy dealership, and then they beat the state contract. That's a really competitive price. It allows us to keep that money here in the county, and that goes a long way to both supporting local businesses, but in supporting local businesses, you support local employees of local businesses, and that's a good thing. Also, it was cheaper, and it was only about $5,000 cheaper, but as Ms. Deidra Holden said earlier, and I quote, $5,000 is... But as Ms. Deidra Holden said earlier, and I quote, $5,000 is $5,000. Right, Tabitha?
Yeah.
So I do appreciate they do that regularly for us, and they are certainly an asset. And they, you know, they're going out of their way to help their local community in doing that. Yeah, they're selling cars in the process, but that's a big deal. So I'm appreciative of that.
Thank you, Ron, and everyone. We have no requirement to go, or no one signed up to, on non-agenda items today, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn so that we go into executive session for, we adjourn the work session here and go into executive session for pending and potential litigation.
I'll make that motion, David.
Motion by Commissioner Davis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hart. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we got 5-0 vote. We're adjourned for executive session.